Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Guthrie Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May 13th, 2021. Can we do roll call?
Yes, Don McBride.
Here.
Aaron Rooney.
Here.
Joe Chapel.
Here.
Abe Gassimpor.
Here.
And Chris Bryant.
Here.
All right, perfect.
All right, do we have any public comments about anything that is not on the agenda tonight? General public comments. All right, move on to the next item. Approval of previous minutes from the April 8th, 2021 regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Sorry, who's the Joe? Okay, perfect. No, you're correct. Don McBride.
Yes.
Aaron Rooney.
Here.
Joe Chapel.
Yes.
And Chris Bryant.
Yes.
Perfect. Yeah, and Abe wasn't here, so he didn't vote.
Item four is PC application number 21-005, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone an 8,475 square foot property located at 821 South Division Street from A1 general agriculture to C2 general commercial. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You may be familiar with the area. Recently, there was a rezone from the property that is around that and is also adjacent to the north. This was a particular parcel that, as you indicated, a small parcel, around 6,000 square feet. The owner that has the other two parcels, or the one around it, just recently acquired this parcel, and so they're looking to rezone it from the A1, which is A to C2, to be compatible with the other ones in the area, as well as the comprehensive plan. So, staff recommends that the rezone be approved as requested.
Is the applicant here? Okay. Yeah, does anyone have any questions for the applicant, or questions, comments amongst the commission? I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. If you could come to the podium. That's okay.
Oh, are you, you what, Max?
Yes, sir.
Oh, this is a different one.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're the next one. That's why at first I was like...
Well, you go ahead and talk for him.
Yeah. But the applicant is here for the first one, because Ann or you, yeah, Ann's able to...
Oh, okay, gotcha. Sorry. Well, I have a question for Ann. Are you Ann?
Yes.
Hi there. This is, doesn't necessarily relate to zoning, but I am just curious about the trees on the property, and especially with the park being right there. Is there an intent to remove any, any more trees? Will there be a buffer of some trees between the property?
I have no idea on that.
Okay.
I think they've removed all the trees, or going to.
Okay, okay. And then, is there any intent to demolish any of the structures that are on the property?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
They're gonna keep it.
Okay, yeah, so the silo and the building.
Yes, yes.
All right, that's all I have. Anybody else have questions or comments? We have a motion? Second?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Joe motioned to approve.
Yeah.
And then you seconded?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Sorry about that. All right, Don McBride?
Yes.
Aaron Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
All right, 5-0.
Now to item five, PC application number 21-006, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone a property located at 711 East Springer Avenue, East Guthrie Block 71, lots six through eight, and the east 15 feet of Lot 9, from R1 single-family dwelling to R2 general residential. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this is an existing 12,600 square foot lot. It's currently zoned R1. They're looking to zone to R2. Their intent is to have a multifamily development on it, hence the reason of going to R2. The comprehensive plan, as you guys are well aware of, that most all this area that is in the original platted area on kind of the east side, was designated for medium-density residential. And so, it fits within the comprehensive plan. Also, even though it's not contingent upon any approval, even if they would put a four-unit development on there, it would fit within the zoning requirements, because they would need a 12,000 square foot lot as a minimum. They have a 12,600 square foot lot. And the only other thing I want to add is, you know, I've said many of the times that we, as a city, need to look at diversifying our available housing options in the community, and we need to look strongly at two to three to four unit developments, especially in this particular area. We have the perfect built environment with the street network, alleys, and proximity, obviously, to the downtown. So, it goes a long way to, again, diversifying our housing options in the community. So, having said all that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the rezone from R1 to R2. And the applicant is here.
Okay, applicant's here, okay, that's you. And then, is there anyone from the public who is here to speak on this item?
Ma'am?
Would you mind up, if you could come up, just so folks can hear you?
And you can also take your mask off, if you'd like, ma'am.
Yeah, I live next door to that lot. Is it gonna make a controversy for the other people living in that area? Because they're, they're redoing the houses across the street.
Uh huh.
People are moving in them, the low-income families. I mean, it's me and my kids in that house, and I'm literally the one house that's lived in on the whole street.
Okay.
So, is it gonna make a difference for the rest of us there?
I don't know, you know, I guess to what you mean by make a difference.
I mean, if you're gonna put in, like, an apartment complex, or...
Well, they wouldn't put in a...
Like for, like for the parking and all that, because in the alley, there's really not an alley.
Right. There's, there will be probably some physical improvements that need to be done, obviously, with one of them that could be the alley as well, because the right-of-way's there. It's just, in some cases, as you indicated, the physical part of it isn't.
Right.
But there's still the availability. And as I indicated in my opening, the most they can put on there, per the current code, is four units.
Okay.
So, that could be one structure with four units. It could be a couple duplexes, but beyond that, but there's controls in the zoning code that would prevent anything beyond a fourplex.
Okay.
And it is within the Guthrie proper overlay district, so even the general design and architecture of those structures are gonna have to be compatible with that area.
Okay.
And that. And the same, obviously, as you indicated, they're gonna have to have parking and all of that.
Right.
That will happen. This is kind of the first step, because right now, they can only have one unit on that property.
Okay.
So, this is the first step to get it rezoned, and then after that, they submit all their plans, and that's when we review all those requirements to make sure they're in compliance.
Okay, I, I also, I have met, like, at least 15 people in the last week saying they all owned that property. So, I don't know who owns it. So, yeah, because the trees have went through my roof. Okay, so you're the 16th person within the last, so I really wanna know who owns it.
Would you like to come forward, if you could share, as the applicant, thank you for your comments, and...
I'm sorry, ma'am, what was your name?
I'm Melissa Reeves.
Okay, thank you.
You could share any, any background you would like to share with us, or if the commission has any questions for the applicant, and that might help answer some questions from neighbors.
Background as far as, like, what we do?
Or what...
What you plan?
I think Dan said it pretty good, it's just...
What is your name again?
My name's Evan Berryhill. This is Max Tempesta. I think just adding more fourplexes to the area. I know there's, there's more single-family homes than multifamily homes, and I think driving the value up, you know, helping people's houses surrounding, so.
What do you guys plan to do for parking, if you've got four families living there? Eight cars, is that kind of...
So, I think first and foremost, everything's gonna depend on...
If you could stand in front, just so the folks can hear.
I'm Max Tempesta, by the way. First and foremost, it's gotta work through architecture and engineering, however the layout best fits the lot. We're not gonna try and squeeze something in there that doesn't make sense, or doesn't live up to the code. So, the best way we can do it, if it ends up being a triplex, or even a duplex, you know, we're gonna be fine with that at the end of the day. But optimally, we fit enough parking to have two parallel, two-family structures with parking in the middle, and...
It wouldn't be like a parking lot, street parking, you know?
Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, I've seen some places in Oklahoma City like that. Near the classen curve, there's that old neighborhood there that has put some multi-units where you actually... Actually, they're more like four houses on what used to be a regular lot.
Right.
They stand alone, but you pull in the middle, and each person has their own home.
Exactly.
And they're older neighborhoods, too.
And everything, I mean, we know that there's an overlay district, and that there's gonna be guidelines we have to live up to as far as the design of the exterior and everything, and...
So that it complements the existing...
Yeah, we'd like to see your plans, not for...
Yeah, Oklahoma City has more examples of missing middle housing, and a lot of times you can't even tell that it's a multi-unit structure.
Exactly.
Looks like a big house.
Yep.
How are your units, how big are your units that you're planning?
As big as we can make them, but I think we're gonna be limited based on size.
Now, my, my, the single family, I've noticed it's two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
It'd be nice to have three bedrooms, if we can.
Per unit?
Per unit would be great. You know, if we could do three ones to save some space, that would be nice. If we end up with two twos, that's probably okay. But we want as many units, or bedrooms as possible, would be the goal.
And so you really don't know what you're gonna do unless you get the new code?
I don't think it's gonna be crazy redundant, you know, it's, it's gonna be conducive and not just to, just pack as many people in there as we can, you know?
Sure. I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, I'll second.
Chris second, all right. Don McBride?
Yes.
Aaron Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
All right, 5-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Item six is PC application number 21-007, discussion and possible action on a request for a planned unit development, PUD, within the R1 single-family dwelling district to allow for the development of 462 residential lots on a 90.57 acre parcel to be known as Guthrie Farms, located at the northeast quarter of Section 16, Township 16 North, Range 2 West, at the southwest corner of Pine Street and University Avenue. The PUD includes requests for exceptions to minimum lot size, minimum lot width, setbacks, lot coverage, street right-of-way widths, and perimeter utility easement widths. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I probably won't go into a great amount of detail. You have my staff report, which is a few pages long. I'm gonna try to hit the highlights, and then also give some of the concerns staff has, because obviously, the applicant's here, but I know some of the audience may want to speak as well. So, as you indicated, this is a request for a planned unit development. It's over off of Pine and the University Avenue right-of-way on the eastern part of our community there. It's a 90-acre parcel, as you indicated. The proposal's for 462 lots. As part of the PUD, they are asking for a number of exceptions, one of them being the minimum lot size be 4,025 square feet. One of them's also the minimum lot width, which would be 35-foot wide. The minimum for both of those is a 50-foot wide, or current code minimum is 50-foot wide, and minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. In addition, they ask for a front setback exception from 25 to 20, lot coverage from 25% to 50%, and then the street widths to 50 feet versus 60 feet, and finally, the perimeter utility easements from 20 to 15 feet. I gave you a breakdown of all the lots in terms of the numbers and their sizes. I'm not gonna go through that. There's a number of things, as you know, that through the planned unit development, that they should be get, or meeting, or areas to consider for approval. Consistency with the comprehensive plan, for the most part, you know, that it's zoned R1, even though the comprehensive plan has it as parks and recreation. I think it was just because it was looked at as open area. I'm not sure why that was there, but it's currently zoned R1. I mean, and so allowing for residential in that area really isn't an issue. There's residential all around. But one of the big issues is compatibility with existing and expected development of the surrounding area, as well as the city. One of the things to keep in mind is, is lot size is not necessarily a, a big issue of it in itself, whether you say 3,000, 4,000, 8,000, or whatever. The main thing is to understand, or take that in the context of how it's being used. In our original platted area, we have what's considered traditional neighborhood development, where you have a standard block pattern. You have streets that have connectivity for many blocks in each direction. We have alleyways that are in the back. And in a lot of those developments, a 3,000 or 4,000 square foot lot is acceptable and, and very frequent, or very common, I should say. In fact, our original platted lots were 25 by 140, 3,500 square foot. We have houses on that. But again, in the context that it is, it provides a great deal of character and usage. When you take it to the context of putting it in what I consider a modern subdivision, it doesn't always work well. You know, I, I had commented in my report, I feel this is the proverbial 10 pounds of potatoes into a 5-pound bag. It, it comes across as a 462-lot cul-de-sac. And I'm not sure that that's appropriate for not only that area, but anywhere in our community. So, that was some of, and, and again, I went into some of the other analysis of that, and, and so if you have any questions of me, you can ask. But based on that, staff does not feel that the exceptions for lot width and lot size should be granted, in that if you want to grant a smaller lot size, so they have a 50 by 115 lot, that I don't really have any issue with that, because that makes it about a 5,700 square foot lot versus 6,000, not a big deal. In that, and honestly, with the exceptions for the rest, I mean, that's to me not really that critical. 20-foot's front setbacks is fine. Lot coverage to be increased, I fully understand that, because not everybody wants a large lot, and so you're gonna need a little bit more lot coverage for homes in the rest of them. So, my recommendation is, again, that the request, exception for lot width be denied. And then, the other issue is, is they have two ingress egress, and they're both off of Pine Street. There's no other connectivity to any other street network that's in that area. And I think it's critical from a public safety standpoint, but even just a general quality of life standpoint, for people in that subdivision to have at least one other outlet. Drexel Drive, there's currently, I would call it maybe a goat path, that's kind of through there. There's at least some potential for connectivity. That could be an option. University Avenue brings up a lot of issues, because there's existing utilities in there, water sewer mains, as well as just the general topography in that area with the floodplain. It, it could cause, you know, a lot of issues. But even having a connectivity to that through Drexel makes the, makes the whole subdivision work so much better. It would be great if we could have more than that, in that, but I'm not sure. I mean, even that would be fine. So, again, one of staff's conditions would be to have a additional connectivity to existing streetwork that's not of the same with the two that they have. A total of three, but one has to be opposite of the adjacent. And then finally, based on all that, they would have to resubmit a planned unit development to show all of the changes in that before we would move forward and go with a preliminary plat. So with that, I'll leave it back to commission, if you have any questions.
And the applicant's here.
And the applicant is here to discuss any of the issues.
Yeah, we'd like to hear from you, and then I'm sure some folks are here to comment as well.
Sure. Mason Schwartz, 522, Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. I will try not to go over too much what was already said. It was before this commission, I think it was one or two months ago, on a residential subdivision as well. We talked about some of these same concepts in terms of what the market is now looking for in terms of homes. And a lot of that has to do with more square feet in the home itself, and less lot size, less maintenance, less upkeep. And that's really what the market is bearing out. And so, I think a couple of things, it's important to remember in this application. First off, the property's already zoned R1, and so the 6,000 square foot lots, under the regular standards, would be allowed tomorrow. What we're here today specifically is because we're not doing exactly what R1 wants. So, that's, sometimes you can handle that through a variance process with certain cities. Other cities, I can see it through planning. I think PUD is a good way to do this kind of deal, especially with the size of a subdivision, to, to get in front of the planning boards and the, the folks making planning decisions, so we can think it out on the whole. I do have Mr. Brad Reed here as well, the engineer, so we can talk about some of the logistics here. But, but I want to go through a little bit of the topography up here and explain why, what we're doing, what we're doing here. So, the comprehensive plan has to the north and to the west, medium-density residential multifamily. This is a bit of a unique property, because it's tucked away in a corner of the city. So if you look at the property, and you can look to the very top right of the screen there, with university, that is actually a section-lined road that runs east and west at the very top. On the east of the property is Pine, the other arterial, and that's where access will be, as you can see here with the two access points. Normally, with the section-lined road, what you would have is university developed. You'd have some retail right there, you'd have a full road, you'd have some retail, you might have some residential back in the middle of the section like this. Problem is, you have floodplain that runs all the way across that north side where university section line is. So that's never gonna be built out as a road, instead, it's gonna stay open area of floodplain. And what that results in is a kind of tucked-away property here, where it doesn't have access to the north section line, like you would see a regular development, and to the south of it, it's buffered by the airport and the industrial land. And so, what this does is it funnels this development right out to Pine, and then it can go up to university, or it can go down to the south to get out to the highway for folks traveling commuters. Now, on the connectivity issue, it's, we don't have the preliminary plat here today. We have a sketch, but if we have to make any adjustments, we'd have to come back with preliminary plat. But I, I think we could, we could commit to doing the access to the north, if the right-of-way connects. We, a couple of comments on it, I'm not sure it's... We didn't think it would be something that would be desired by the city. You've got established development there, you've got 400-plus homes coming in, and now they're going into this existing subdivision with, you know, the road standards. I, I just don't know if you want to put that connectivity with the stuff on the north. If the city wants to see that, we can, we can change the pod to say, to the extent that we can connect to that right-of-way, we will add an access point, or whatever the case is. But the idea behind this is funneling directly to the arterial over by the industrial to the south. I think a couple of other points. The, the comp plan has it as parks. I'm not sure what the idea behind it is, but I think the existing zoning of R1 is obviously what controls. And so I think that's kind of how we stand today. It, perhaps there was some sort of thought there'd be some use as parkland, but obviously, when you have private land, it's designated as parks. If you don't have something like a golf course already there, it's, you know, it's more or less private land still, so you gotta be able to develop it in a way that makes sense from a planning standpoint. And lastly, on the, on the lot width, again, the, if we could meet all the lot width and, and lot size, we wouldn't have to be here today. We would go out under the current zoning, develop R1. The lot widths, where they are, and lot size, where they are, are kind of fundamental to what we're trying to do here, and which is provide that market. And you talked about the missing middle, and that's, you know, one of the, the different market factors, along with this, you know, bigger lot coverage, smaller lot size trend in the market that you see with some of the younger folks looking to buy homes. So, we, we might be able to tweak some of the stuff on the lot width, which I then, I think, might in turn tweak the lot size. And you heard staff say they were okay with the lot size if we got the lot width right. So I think the 50 by the 115 is what staff wants to see. If there are, if need be, I think we could probably do a minimum of 40, so we're talking about a difference of 10 feet in width, that's off between what staff and I are proposing. But I think it's, it's real close, and concerned to our client, they're saying that 40 could still make it work. If we go to 50, again, then you're looking at really close to what you're seeing under regular R1 development, in which case, you wouldn't have to go through the PUD process. So, that's a cap of everything. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. Mr. Reed, obviously, for the technical pieces of it, and the engineering, and if anybody has anything else.
Stay here for a second, and we'll, let's see if we have any questions for the applicant right now. The, the detention areas, it sounds like some of the trees are gonna be left in place for that, in, in the middle of the property. And, yeah, my question is, could, could that be utilized for recreation trails, anything like that, that would add an amenity to the neighborhood, rather than just the detention function?
Yeah, so, I brought this, we're not, as you were aware, we're talking about zoning, but I think it is pretty good to be able to see a picture of what we have. So what we were planning on is a large park area right behind this set of lots. There's a big drainage way that runs through the middle right here, it's full of trees. But we have this area that's, that can be utilized for park. We have it open on the east side to allow for, you know, a trail system, to allow connectivity, the park up at the front, to allow for that. Again, we have a large drainage way down through here, you could allow for some connectivity through there, you know, passive, passive recreation through there. And then, you know, again, we need some detention facilities, things like that, but make those where they can be an asset to the subdivision itself.
I have a question. If you're proposing a park area and stuff, is it something you're gonna build while you're building the subdivision, or you're just gonna say it's a dedicated area for a park?
I, I don't know, Dave. What, I don't want to tell you that I have an answer today, but, you know, it would be built probably with the subdivision, whatever they decide to do. And obviously, they want some amenity to be able to sell a house to somebody.
So that would be up to the homeowner association, if they want to build a park?
It would be probably up to the homeowner association at the end, but developer would put it in, in the front, and then give it to the homeowner association.
Just, just to add, Mr. McBride, it can be a condition of approval to ensure that it gets done. That would be the appropriate way to do it, because if you leave it up to the developer, it won't get done.
And just so you know, the, the pod has in there that we're gonna meet all your regular landscaping regulations. So we're still committing to all of the other R1 standards that you have. If there's something specific we want to see in the pub regarding those, and usually, the way we do it through a pub would just be, you know, commit to this being open space or common area, and then through the covenants, they would take care of exactly how they're gonna, you know, because it's, sometimes it's up to the, it ends up being up to the homeowner association in terms of what kind of facilities.
Yeah, sure, yeah. My question was just that the, the topography would allow for there to be at least trails, or something like that, for recreation?
Because I understand it.
Yes.
Okay.
And on that point, if you look at the comprehensive plan map for this area, there's actually, I think it might have been the original plan, there was, it didn't really show it there, but there's a trail that was planned along the north side of this, that runs kind of concurrent with the floodplain. And so, and that was another reason we were kind of hesitant to do the connectivity to the north, was because if we didn't know to what extent that would disturb some sort of open space trail, I mean, again, you're, you're putting traffic through the north. It's, yes, it serves the goal of connectivity in terms of planning, but sometimes connectivity isn't always ideal when you're talking about one neighborhood coming in 30 years, 20 years after the other. And I think you saw that complaint with the Audile Homes case that came a few months ago, where it was, hey, we've got an existing neighborhood, we don't want to be connected to this, more or less. Now, again, that's something we can work out at the plating stage. But, yeah, I think the trails would be something that's, you know, in conjunction with what's already kind of out there in terms of the, the trails along the north, and what was, and I believe there are trails up there. I'm just not sure if the city has invested in, in doing that per the comp plan yet.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're not formal. But I just want to remind the commission that the PUD is the point at which we should be making those, if you want to say, conditions or those approval. Currently, through our subdivision process, it would not require any type of recreational or open-space-type improvements and that. It's strictly drainage issue at that point. So, if there's gonna be any consideration for that, it needs to be conditions on the PUD, not the plating process. The plating process, it's too late.
Any other questions, comments for the applicant? When I first looked at the map, it did make sense about wanting to connect to the existing neighborhood, but then when I drove by it, I can see that there's not a lot of connectivity. I mean, it's, this parcel feels very much like a greenfield development that you're, you're developing. And, and I do wonder if there is, it doesn't make sense for there to be a main entrance from the north, but it may be some kind of a, an access point. And I don't know if, you know, there's, most of those streets are dead ends, they're closed off, or is it even possible, would it even be possible, like walnut, for example? Drexel's a long, narrow road.
Right, but through that existing subdivision, that's a through road through there. It ties into Drexel, so that right-of-way... into Drexel. So that right-of-way exists there already. In fact, it's a, it's a 50-foot right-of-way that exists. This exists, and it ties into Drexel in that. Again, physically, it's not as developed through here. It basically stops here. This point isn't physically developed. This current street's come through like this, and then there's basically kind of a back trail through there.
Yeah. And it is, it is narrow and wooded, and would there, what kind of standards would, would need to be?
Oh, it'd be full of, you know, city standards. Yeah, absolutely. One of the other options is to substantially reduce your density, and then we solve part of that problem, too. Go to 6,000-square-foot lots, and a lot of, some of that somewhat takes care of itself because the amount, yeah, because the amount of lots they can plat are less, because it's obviously going to take up more acreage.
Okay.
And we could, I mean, again, we could put that in the plat that, right now, it says, the way it reads is, this PUD shall have two access points off of Pine. We can amend that to say, shall have two access points off of Pine, and, you know, we can do it as a third access point, shall be reviewed with the plat, or if we need to say, shall have a third access point. However you guys want to see it, to make sure at the plat that you're at least reserving the, the right to require it at the plating stage. We're okay with that. I just, we don't.
And that was my condition. I don't have a problem with the two on Pine. I just was saying that there should be an additional one from a different connectivity.
And again, part of it is, is if university was developed all the way to the west there, and it was maybe just a cut through that neighborhood, but I mean, you're having to get, you're having to go through some substantial
It's pretty dense.
portions of that old neighborhood, and I'm not sure it serves either neighborhood, the new or the old, because I'm not sure it helps the old neighborhood get to Pine any faster, and I'm not sure it helps the newer neighborhood get to Pine any faster, if you, if you hear, understand what I'm saying.
If we wanted to push the issue, we would have them develop university, and then we're done. I don't think they want to put the financial resource of that, so I'm trying to find a happy middle.
Right.
But if push comes to shove, they can fully develop university.
Well, I'm not sure we can. I'm not sure we can. It's, it's not even touching our property. I think that's part of the problem, but.
It's part of your property. It's touching it. There's connectivity. There's an access.
At the very end, you mean, on the west side of it?
The two points up north that connects to it, that right-of-way goes all the way through. You connect here, you connect there.
Yeah. Again, well, again, that's section line, so it's also county jurisdiction. But we'll, I mean, we can, we can commit to the third access point. If that's what planning wants to see, it's not a deal breaker for us, so.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item from the community?
I don't know how they're going to handle the, I need some traffic.
Can you come up front?
Yeah, if you could come up to the mic, sir. Thank you.
Say your name and address for record, please.
I'm Herb Reeve. I live at 1024 South Pine. It's right across the street from my house. How are they going to handle that? Traffic on Pine is getting more and more every day, and faster and faster every day. And our police department don't seem want to be slowing it down, but if you're going to put 462 more houses over there, how are you going to handle the traffic?
How soon do we expect those houses to be starting to go in? Do we have any, any idea? Plus minus 15%?
Hard to say, but I think the best info we have right now is maybe 18 months for the first phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak on this? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Staff has recommended a few exceptions. We can stipulate what we want, yeah.
I have a question. I'm kind of curious. Where'd, where'd y'all get the name from?
That I could not tell you off the top.
Doesn't seem like a whole lot of room for farming.
It, just a little bit of history. There was a previous subdivision, and for that same property, that was called English Farms. I'm not really sure where they got that, but it might have been a takeoff of that. I'm, I'm not sure.
The English family was the owner.
Thank you. There you go. Because it was English Farms before, so they might have just, obviously, it's in Guthrie, so they went Guthrie Farms.
You know, I really appreciate you guys, you know, choosing Guthrie and looking to invest in our community. We really do. So I apologize about the zinger.
Hey, if I had knew where those came from and I was making the names, I'd probably get paid more money and not be right here.
I hear you. I hear you. Just the problem that I see, so, before I moved to Guthrie and fell in love with this town, I was a petroleum engineer. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff that gets lost between the planning phases and what actually happens on the ground. And there's a lot of stuff going on in the world right now, in material, supplies, shortages, but, but most importantly, the people that actually do, do that work, skilled labor. So I worry, one, you know, about traffic, about people that already lived there. I worry about y'all being able to get the materials to do what you need to. Worry about the people that are actually going to buy these homes. I've got, I've got worries, sir. But I don't want that to stop you or deter you, because I really appreciate you all's efforts.
Sure. And we understand that. And that's, it just, it comes with the territory of being at the zoning phase, and just being at the initial phases of, of these land use entitlements and development. And what I would, again, I would say is, you know, it's zoned R1, and so, you know, this, again, go out there today and do the 6,000-square-foot, and I'm not, not even sure how many lots that would total up to. But, you know, while I sense some of these concerns with traffic in Pine, if we went out there and did the R1 zoning development today, you would still have, you know, all the traffic going to Pine. It's already zoned for, for that. So it's a matter of, again, we, we look at it as a matter of the difference between what's allowed right now and what's being asked for. And that's really just a matter of lot width and number of lots.
Sure. I guess what I'd like to see, you know, here in Guthrie, we really like to partner or to help everyone out as much as possible. Some of the locals might have some good advice to help alleviate some of you guys' problems, because I know, you know, you guys are in this to make money. I, I get that. And you have to make money, and I hope that you do. So, and I'm sure Herb would like to see his neighborhood fixed up. So, whatever we can do to partner, to help, but I, I do think the current plan has some issues. That, that's all, if you have any.
Well, Eddie, we can, we're willing to address, we can do 40-foot minimums. So I think if you look at the, in the staff report, if you, I mean, if we want to bring the 35 up to 40, then you're talking about 141 lots that would be increased in size. And so we could, we can make these adjustments. This is not the final plan.
Sure.
We would, we would have to come back before you guys for the plating phase.
Yeah. And, and hopefully, we can do that quickly. I hate to deter you.
So I just want to mention real quick, the 50 by 115s, unfortunately, for the way this site lays out, that doesn't help us on, on, on getting some density. I, I, you know, this, there was a plat on this prior, and for some reason, they couldn't figure out a way to make that work. We kind of did run the numbers with the way the other plat was, and we had some issues with that as well. So, we're, we, we can commit to the 120 depth. We have no problem with that. We need to, to be able to, to lower the, the lot width to get some density. If you saw in your staff report, I, I gave a, some reasoning behind kind of, you know, what we're thinking, what we're doing. I understand that Guthrie's not Oklahoma City, but this has been a, a shift in Oklahoma City that we've seen a lot of. We've, I, I've zoned 160 acres with 40-foot lots. It had some similar problems with it. It had some, some drains that kind of came through, large areas of drainage-related open space. So you get the density in the areas that you can, and then you leave the open space. You leave the trees. You can leave the drainage, things like that. So, you know, that's kind of the shift that we've seen. Again, there was, you know, it's, it's the young families. It's the empty nesters. It's, you know, there's, there's a market in it that this developer sees is, is pretty hot right now, and so that's why they are interested in developing this and coming to Guthrie, so.
Yeah. And you're trying to find a price point that also makes sense for the market.
Because if we, you know, unfortunately, it, it's true, though. If we, if we're able to add 20 lots, then the, you know, $10 million of this cost divided by 20 lots, you know, it, it helps out. And then ultimately, that's passed on to the, the home buyer. Keeps the lot price down by $3,000 or $4,000, and so.
And I don't have a problem with, you know, housing density. I, I live, you know, close to downtown, and we have, we have dense homes. But, you know, let me just skip to the point. What would you guys like to see happen here, knowing that we have some issues to resolve?
Oh, you know, we're, I think we're open to a conversation of, you know, honestly, the 35s, we, we, we can live without those, but, you know, what's, at what level could we get to a place where everyone is happy with this?
We'd like to, I guess, have a better understanding of what your issues are and the rest of the commission's issues, so we can see if we can address them tonight, perhaps.
And I got to be straightforward with y'all. I've got a teething youngster, and I did not get to, to do as much homework on this as you guys have, and I apologize for that. So, I do trust the words that, you know, Dan Kasseck has put together for us in the report, and his words so far have steered me correct, and I think this counsel, and as well as our comments from, from the public. I don't know. That's all I have to say on the matter, from my standpoint.
Any other comments, questions? I, what, the, the three issues that would concern me, I'm okay with a 40-foot minimum, a third access point, and a commitment to recreation areas. As a, as a trade-off for the smaller, for the density, that's, you know, to make sure that those amenities are in place when this is developed.
Sure. So I mean, if, for, for that standpoint, from a PUD, however we'd like to see it, I mean, we could, we could write in the PUD that, you know, there should be designated open space or common areas. And I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the acreage is, but we can, you can commit on the record to amending the PUD in terms of the open space to designate it for amenities and common area. I'm not sure, sit here a day beyond that, like the specifics of those amenities that we commit to, but.
Well, sure, yeah. Just, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with whatever amenities can be offered.
So then, so we're, we're okay with everything, all your three conditions, just so you know.
Okay, all right. But, yeah, we want to hear from the commission about what other exceptions we would want to allow or not allow.
I mean, first of all, I don't like 40-foot lots, so.
And that's okay.
But a lot of young people do, though.
I mean, everybody in this town is built.
And that's not, that's, not all of them would be 40.
They can build all they want in 6,000-square-foot lots. They wouldn't have to be here.
And again, I would just say, it's a market thing. And I think this is the perfect spot for this type of thing, because it's not, it's not bordering all, all this other single-family residential 6,000-square-foot that's, that's altering other, other developments. Again, it's tucked between this floodplain and this airport, and it's going to be funneled out to Pine. It's, it's going to be its own community. And so I, I understand that certainly there's a lot of people that would not want 6,000-square-foot lots, but it's, it's a kind of community for those people that do want it. It's not impacting the things around it the way that this, the topography is.
I've lived on 4,000-square-foot lots, so I know what they're like trying to build an outside storage building on a 4,000-square-foot lot.
And I, and I understand it. I, but, again, there is that market, and it's because of the folks that want less maintenance, that want, they want more square footage out of the home in terms of where they get their, their value. And it does exist. Smarter people than I have figured it out, I guess.
They can agree to a playground in that common area.
So we, I guess, we just sent to the client, we can agree to a playground in the common area, for sure. At least it's something concrete to get the ball rolling on that.
You're asking too much to change of what this request that you have as far as the exceptions, you know, 6,000 to 4,000, just all of this changed. But that, that, Dan, that 50-foot street, that include that 15-foot utility?
Yeah, and those I don't inherently have a problem with, because honestly, when we go to our updated zoning code, that will probably become the standard. Ideal homes had 50 feet. Most modern subdivisions are having 50 feet, because just like we had talked before, the actual area that's paved isn't really decreasing. It's just the total area of right-of-way that's decreasing. So you're going to have your normal width of paved street in that. And even the utility in that, I don't have issues with that, because again, that, that's pretty typical. And, and again, with our updated subdivision code to reflect that as a standard, so. And, and like I said, even setbacks, honestly, I, you know, I don't want to get into it now, but I, I don't always put a lot into setbacks. They're very subjective. And, and to me, large setbacks are not very conducive a lot of times to development and the character of areas. So that's why I said, I don't inherently have problems with that. But just to add, one of the concerns I always have with small lots, especially in the context of this, is it, it determines the character that you're going to get for that neighborhood. You got a 35-foot wide lot, that gives you a 25-foot buildable area, which includes an attached garage, you know. And so, one of the things that you see on some small lots that are maybe 4,000 square feet, there's an alley. They have a detached garage. That total buildable width is for your house. Here, we're not going to get that. So, you know, and, and that's probably the planner in me. I have, you know, obviously, some, you know, that's what I look at. Because I do agree, density and, and all that, I, I think is kind of overrated sometimes, but I think we need to look at the character and the context of what's going to happen, you know, with different developments and that. So I've, I've said all I probably need to say. So thank you.
I'll make a motion. Does anyone doesn't have anything else to say?
Let's hear it.
I, I, I feel like with the exceptions that staff has mentioned being granted, that, you know, that we have basic minimums, and I would, I would suggest that we agree with the go-ahead on a planned unit development with the requested exemptions for lot width being denied, and giving the exemptions for the setbacks, the minimum lot size, the lot coverage, the street right-of-way, and the perimeter utility easement width.
Chairman, I know we got a motion, but can I ask one thing, and if you want to modify it, you can. If not, you don't have to. I, I think what we came to with staff was that staff would be okay with, correct if I'm wrong, 40, 50-foot minimums, but then the lot size down to the, is it 5,000?
Yeah, the depth, I, I, you know, I, if you want to say as, as kind of a concession or, or to, you know, try to work, I don't have a problem with the 115-foot, because the difference between 115 and 120, really, in the big scheme of things, isn't a whole lot, but it does obviously help them some. But what, the development that you're going to get on the lot, it doesn't very much. And so I don't have a problem with 50 by 115. So that would, again, allow them to have a minimum of, it would still be 50-foot wide lots, but an exception to the minimum lot size, which would be, I think, 57, 50? Is it?
Yes, that's what we have.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so that 57, 50 does reflect the 50 by?
Right, 115.
My apologies. And so I, I think that, then I think the motion would be what staff already has in there.
Yeah, okay.
You're saying, you're saying 5,700-square-foot lots?
Yeah, it would come to 57, 50, because that's a 50 by 115.
50 by 115, okay.
Yeah, and I'm doing my math.
And that was already your recommendation of, of a compromise?
Yeah.
Sorry, that would, I just wanted to clarify.
Because obviously, if we're going to do a minimum, it would be 60 by 120. That's 6,000 square feet. So, again, 50 by 115, I, I think in this case, the width is more critical than the depth. Yeah.
I agree.
Agreed. Okay. Did you, were you done with your motion?
Pardon me?
Are you done with your motion?
Yes.
And so, again, so.
I covered everything.
Right. I was just going to say, so I clarify, your motion was to basically approve it based on staff's recommendation. Okay, thank you. And then I need a second. There was only a motion. Who, I'm sorry, who's second? Oh, nobody?
I'll say.
I'll say. Okay, thanks.
Do we, do we want to, if it's just me, that's fine, but do we want to include any additional language about the rec, the playground, as well as a third access point?
Wouldn't that be on the second step?
No, it would be now, but, but again, I'll, I'll say that, as was indicated, if they come in right now, they can do 50 by 120 by right without any issue. They don't need to provide any additional, you know, open space or amenities. One of the reasons you look for some of these enhanced amenities is you're given exceptions. So it's like, okay, we'll allow you to have this. You give us this, you know, that, you know, negotiate. Here, going to almost minimum-sized lots, I'm not as concerned about having specific conditions saying you have to do X, in terms of trails or, or, you know, playgrounds and that.
Okay.
So I'm good.
And how about, does that alleviate the concerns with traffic and access?
It helps. Well, yeah, absolutely, because again, you know, I, I think it'll be a better product overall, but we still are looking for that addition, other access besides Pine Street, and that's something that obviously can be worked out. It's not in there saying it has to be Drexel, or it has to be, there could be some other revisions that may work and that, so we'll just kind of have to see how things go.
I didn't, I didn't mention that in my motion, but.
Okay, you want that out?
No, no, no. The, the third, I didn't mention it specifically.
No, and that's why I wanted to clarify.
Sorry, that's another thing that was already in your.
Right. And that's why I wanted to clarify that it was, right, per staff recommendations, because that was one of them in there. Okay.
All right. So the motion.
Are, just out of curiosity, do these, do these homes, they're not required to have storm shelters or anything like that, are they?
No. There's no code requirements for that. It's at the discretion of either the property owner or the developer, or a combination of It's at the discretion of either the property owner or the developer or a combination of both.
I just think that's another reason why there needs to be more egress points, too.
Yeah, it's a public safety thing.
Probably three, four, five, depending on how it lays out.
And it, you know, again, I mean, our, our calculus is based on thirty-five up to forty minimums, and so I, some of the stuff we talked about with the access and all the other, it's, it's hard now to sit there and say we can do X, Y, and Z, because if theoretically we get approved under, as is being proposed, you'd have to look and see what goes where and what we can do, so...
With fifty?
With, with, yeah, because we, again, we haven't, this is, we haven't put something together spatially speaking with fifty, so... I know that, I ran the number, they ran the numbers, and they indicated to us that it's probably not feasible there, so I'm not sure where it goes from here, but we, you know, we'll, we'll see and we'll talk to them.
So is that something that can be discussed further?
Yeah, and also keep in mind, you know, you guys are a recommendation body, this goes to the council, there could be further discussion or other stuff that, you know, transpire, and at the end of the day, yes, there's always other options that can be discussed, some of them may require back through a public process or something like that, but, you know, there's always opportunities to discuss stuff.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, are we all clear on that and ready to vote?
Yes.
Don McBride?
Yes.
Oh.
Are we still sure where you want to vote on this, or are we going to shuffle it and come back?
It's, I, I, I think we take, if it's going to be a vote with a recommendation of, per the staff report, I, I think we take it, because I don't, I don't think that there's much, I think we understand your position on, on the fifty-foot and staff's position and in terms of the planning commission, unless you guys think that there's something that we can show you between now and the next meeting that would allow forty-foot, fifty-foot, then I'll leave that up to you, but if, if not, I think we just go forward with the recommendation and go from there.
The egress and the traffic issues concern me, they do, and I, I can't get around that. Well, that's in, that's in the motion.
Is it?
Part of it, yeah, to help alleviate that some, yeah.
All right, okay, I'm good, I'm good to vote.
Okay, so, Don McBride?
Yes.
Aaron Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Chapel?
Yeah.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, five oh.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Onto item seven, PC application number two-one-dash-zero-zero-nine, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone a thirteen-point-seven-three-acre property located at the northwest corner of Hillcrest Avenue and Pine Street from A-two suburban district to R-one single-family dwelling, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is probably one of those, it's probably as straightforward as we can get. This is a parcel that's on the, same on Pine, but very northern portion, it's at Hillcrest and Pine, it's on the east side of the subdivisions that are over there off of Mockingbird and kind of Walnut, and again, Hillcrest connects with Pine. It's right there on the corner, it's a thirteen-point-seven-three-acre parcel, it's currently zoned A-one, or A-two suburban district, which is an egg district, and they're looking to go to R-one. Their intent is to subdivide it, but at this point, they're looking to subdivide it to meet all the applicable zoning or subdivision codes, so six thousand square foot lot minimums, et cetera, et cetera. The comprehensive plan calls for that entire area to be single-family R-one, and as I indicated, all of it around there is R-one. There is an actual planned unit development, R-five, that's right across, but it functions as a R-one, because there's single-family homes in there. So based on that, staff recommends that they approve the rezone from A-two to R-one.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, quick question, is...
Say, the applicant, if you do have questions, is here, yep.
If you have any questions for...
All right. I know that everybody wants to see Pine improved and resurfaced. Do we have any idea on, it sounds like between these two developments, that's another reason to, to improve it?
Yeah, well, as you know, the city's working on, especially Pine, down by the bridge and all that, we're still working through things to get that widened and, and the bridge fixed and, and things like that. You know, this particular subdivision, because it's thirteen acres, it, you know, they're not going to obviously have four hundred lots in that, so its impact to the area will be quite minimal compared to others, but, yes, you know, with any of our roads at some point, with the amount of development that goes in a certain area, they become a much greater priority to either fix or, you know, widen or whatever, but, but especially with this one, we're not at that point yet for that area.
Yeah, okay. Any questions for the applicant?
After work, you've seen your shooter.
Well, you want us to ask you?
No.
We're going to answer three exceptions.
Are you going to have one, more than one acre?
I'm sure we, we put you on the front just real quick.
I know.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a question.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you didn't ask the colleague.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, please, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Which? I'm David Davis, I'm the property owner directly to the west of this property, so my question would be, six thousand-foot lot lines concerns me because of the size of the home. Is there any way to see a plot or a layout, or is he, are we just asking for this variance now or change?
At this point, at this point, it's just a rezoning problem, so...
Yeah, I was going to say, I can answer, because that's it, at this point, it's a rezone, it's a land use decision, in that, as I indicated in the opening, when they come back, they have to meet all of the code requirements for plating minimum lot size. Our minimum lot size in an R-one is six thousand square feet, so we can't make them go larger in that, and so, again, with the thirteen acres, there's going to be obviously a few homes in there, but again, it's not going to be where we have hundreds of them on there, because depending on how they lay it out, they may have to put a street in there and almost make a loop-type thing in that, but like I said, it goes back to, they have by right, once the zoning's there, to go to six thousand square feet. If for some reason they would want to deny the request for a rezone, it could, but honestly, it, like I said, it, it fits everything from the comprehensive plan, surrounding areas, and, you know, it's an area where a lot of that is, is where we're going to see development, because it's open acreage in that, so... But right now, like I said, because it's a rezone, yeah, because at a future date, they'll be coming back and they'll be going through a preliminary plat process and eventually a final plat process, and that's where we look at to make sure it's graded properly, the drainage, the minimum lot sizes, water, sewer, infrastructure, and if they're putting a street in there, that it meets minimum city standards, all of that stuff comes at the plating. This is just a step to get it there to where they can do that.
So that's probably more my concerns at that level.
Yeah, 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 and, and I guess the, the only reassurance I can give you is it'll have to meet all the code requirements, and we do have a retention-detention ordinance, so again, they can't just go in there and kind of willy-nilly grade it and, you know, disturb the adjacent properties with drainage and other stuff, so...
Because my house is also right there, too.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I fully understand, and, and down the road, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to stop in and I can help you out best I can.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's see, did we have a motion?
Oh, we did, Joe, okay, I'm sorry, did, was there a second?
I don't know.
Abe did? Okay, thanks, Abe. Don McBride?
Yes.
Aaron Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
All right, five oh.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, item eight, PC application number two-one-dash-zero-one-zero, discussion and possible action on a request for a special use permit to allow for a church, church-on-the-hill, and other religious activities for a temporary period within the central business district for a property located at one-two-three North First Street.
Okay, no problem.
Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I got a call probably about four-thirty this afternoon, the applicant unfortunately is sick, and so they could not make it, so, obviously, the planning commission can move forward with any action that they desire, but if there's a need to want to talk to the applicant or have discussions, as I indicated, unfortunately, they won't, could not be here, so I'll leave it up to the planning commission on how they would like to move forward in that. I can go over my staff report, or you could decide however you want to do it.
Okay, the applicant is not here, would you like to move forward with discussion and action?
I have it, so if, first of all, I want a definition of temporary.
September...
September thirtieth.
Yeah, I mean, their request is to September thirtieth, I, I can go over the staff report, I, even on a temporary basis, I have some concerns, but...
The second question that I have is, if the church is there, the church's restriction does not apply to the downtown, you can't sell the liquor, or we can't do a lot of stuff, because churches, it does not change that, because it's temporary, right?
No, correct. I mean, obviously, if the church use goes away in a short period, anything after that or before that, but technically, yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and go through my staff report, yeah.
Existing businesses.
Yeah, because again, if, if you guys want to take action, you can, you know, there's no requirement that they be here in that, so anyway, as you may know or remember, not too long ago, we had a similar request for a different location, this one, the previous one was more, if you want to say, in the heart of the central business district. This one is at the Legion Building, that's over there at Cleveland and First. As indicated, they are looking for a temporary period, which through a special use permit, it could be conditioned for a certain timeframe, whether that be thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, a hundred-and-twenty days, whatever the case may be. The applicant has indicated the end of September, September thirtieth in that, but in general, you know, staff still has concerns much like that was the previous one. You could probably make an argument that if you go down the road and even on a temporary basis allow the church, then, again, you can have other churches come in for a temporary basis or a more permanent basis, however, in, in, you know, it just murky's the water, so to speak. I, as was in the last staff report, I do not believe that that's an appropriate use for a downtown for a lot of the reasons, one of it is because of the ABLE Commission laws with alcohol and, and different stuff like that, but just generally, it's not. I know in Oklahoma, because, you know, we're in the Bible Belt, a, a lot of codes actually allow it, you go most places outside of, of some of the areas, it's not a, it's not an allowed use in a downtown period in that, for a lot of those reasons. And so, again, just keep in mind in that, there's some of those, but ultimately, I guess, the, the one aspect of it is, is if you do approve it, you should definitely do it only for the temporary period, so this doesn't become a long-term in that, so I had still recommended denial based on the fact that it's an incompatible land use, but I'll leave it up to the commission to, you know, take all that information and, and if you do, make a decision.
Is there anyone?
Yeah, questions, comments?
Is there anyone here to speak on?
No, they were, I, and I'm sorry, you were in the restroom, Joe, the applicant, the applicant called me about four-thirty and they are sick, and they actually sounded sick, so I fully believe that was the truth, and so they could not make it, so that's why I said I leave it up to the commission, whether they want to move forward or if they would rather wait until the applicant can be available to answer questions.
Aaron?
So just some questions from, I get to pee on here in the group, you guys were involved the last time, and I wasn't, so I apologize if I'm asking any redundant questions.
I mean, I don't know what they could answer to, as far, as far for September the thirtieth, and, you know, what are you going to do at the end of September the thirtieth if the church is not built, you're going to cut them off from having services downtown on Sunday?
Yeah, I mean, technically, from a, again, a permitting and enforcement standpoint, you're right.
They would have some foresight to that, no, and they can approach the board again, correct?
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, they could, they could come back and, and basically go through the process again and ask for more time.
So, one, what are the implications if we were to allow this to happen?
Well, like I said, you know, and, and I almost said it in the last, with the, I am really big on precedent, precedent can go a long way in zoning and land use, and, and one of the concerns is, again, when you have a central business district that is as small as it is, because it is a very unique place, and one, one area of the central business district hardly varies from the other. When you go to the community as a whole, you have commercial areas throughout the, you know, community, and so there could be some where in one commercial area of the city could be more appropriate for use versus another, but when you get to a small area like the central business district, it's hard to tell a, it's, it's hard to say yes to a use, and then when that use comes back to say no, because it's very hard to justify why one is, is, it can be there and that, because you, you know, you can't get to the point where you're basically dictating, darn it, I lost my chain, I thought, I hate getting old, regulating competition, so to speak, you know, so if, if one church comes in, you can't tell the other two, well, we only want one church downtown, you know, or again, it's like a restaurant, you know, if, if it were in the same situation, you can't say, well, okay, you, we only want one restaurant downtown, the rest of you can't go. And so through a special use permit, obviously, you know, you have the discretion to kind of say no at the beginning, and that kind of leads, you start allowing them, even on a temporary use, that precedent slowly gets started to get set, because you can say, well, you allowed the church in, yeah, it was temporary, but you still allowed the use in there, so what's the difference between three months and three years? And so anyway, that's just some of the stuff that, you know, I always look at, it's kind of like with the, with the PUD, you allow thirty-five-hundred-square-foot lots there, it's, or thirty-five-foot-wide lots there, it's hard to tell the next guy that thirty-five-foot-wide lots aren't appropriate, so anyway.
I mean, I think I can understand why they want to hold services there.
Oh, absolutely.
But the whole, while it's being built, there's one thing about it, to keep coming back and asking for an extension, if you have September thirtieth as a deadline...
Yeah.
In, in the application, impose a high-dollar penalty after September thirtieth that they have to sign off on, and if they're not out of there, they'll be paying an enforceable daily penalty.
Well, yeah, and again, it also goes back to, if you gave them ninety, or, you know, basically ninety days or whatever it is, a hundred-and-twenty days, whatever it is, it's hard to say, well, then we can't give you more time and that, so again, it's just, you know, I, I just, again, are big on precedent with stuff.
And then you would need to be consistent with the amount of time, you'd have to define temporary or span of time for any future applicants.
Right, right.
I also wonder how it might affect nearby establishments during that temporary period and the ABLE Commission, I mean...
Yeah, I will say what's there is, you know, in, in that we found from ABLE, they're legal non-conforming, so if the church comes in and there's an alcohol establishment across the road, they're basically legal non-conforming, you know, they're grandfathered, so to speak, but obviously, if something new comes in, yeah, even on a temporary basis, that could be an issue. I don't have the answer for sure, because I'm not certain that even ABLE maybe has dealt with temporary types, maybe they have, there might be some things in there. One of the other things I will say is, and this came up in the other meeting, is there is a waiver that the church can do to basically say, we're waiving, you know, the, the fact that they need to be a certain distance and that, if you were going to approve it, I would suggest that you make a condition that they sign the waiver, so there isn't any issue of somebody coming in with a alcohol beverage use.
I like, question, another lamest question that ABLE Commission, I'm not familiar too much, you know, I haven't, haven't worked in the service industry, what kind of implications?
Regulating how many, how many feet?
Yeah, they're, yeah, because...
From a, from a bar restaurant?
Yeah, yeah.
That a church can be?
Yeah, yeah.
That's new to me.
How close a, a bar can be?
Can be from a church.
For a church, or to or from a church, yeah.
And you said, you said the council has told us that current establishments are grandfathered.
ABLE has, yeah, that they're, they're, they would be considered legal non-conforming.
Uh-huh, but any, but any, a new establishment may have to...
But again, as was brought up at the last time this came around, there is a waiver that can be signed, yeah.
That is in the American Legion Building, isn't it?
Yeah, that is correct.
As far as land use, though, one could argue that the American Legion is not a commercial activity as well, and it's currently existing.
True.
That may be a reason why they chose that location or...
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know if that's a Sunday-only thing, or is that a day?
I have no idea.
Well, they have, and they do have a sign that's been advertising services, and, so is this a case where maybe they've, they've already been having services, and, and if we don't take action now, then they could continue versus...
Are they having services there now?
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah, I, I will say it gets more complicated, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, I mean, versus, if we, if we say, we say no, then they would have to stop, but if we don't, if we table it, or, you know, then they, they might just continue anyway.
Maybe they shouldn't have made application.
Maybe they were forced to.
Maybe they were forced to.
I mean, the, the legal non-conforming and the waiver does make a difference in my mind a little bit, since this, the land use, the location is already a nonprofit-oriented use, but, but again, precedent.
Well, it'll probably be built by September anyway, where they're going to.
Yeah, and obviously, that's.
Tornado hit.
Yeah, that's why they have the timeframe, because that's their, that's their desire and ultimately where they want to be on a permanent basis.
And they would have to come back to us to extend it, right?
Yeah, yeah, either just apply for a new one or, I, I think there's provisions in the, in there for a special use permit to be off, to be honest, offhand, I don't remember what they are. There might be, but either way, whether they come back for a new one or they have an extension of the existing, it serves the same purpose.
I mean, I think where they're at and what they're wanting to do temporarily, and it's American Legion Building, it's kind of set up for it. They've got some parking there for it if it's a Sunday thing. So if it were a September 30th thing, without even them being here, I could be in favor of it.
Yeah, with that, with those specific conditions and, you know, characteristics of the location and the length of time, I would be okay with it. I just, would this open up, like I say, if some, a church wanted to have a temporary use in an empty storefront in the downtown area?
And again, as I said.
Would that be different?
Well, no, you're right. I mean, and again, that is, is one of the possibilities, because it would be very difficult to tell this one in the central business district, you can be there for, you know, a temporary period, and then the next one that comes in that they can't in that.
You might be able to argue the point that this is a storefront-type building.
And I don't think many churches are going to be able to afford the rent.
Well, there's that. The economics may not play out, but you never know.
This place is kind of unique from having to do it temporary rather than being over in the building across from the post office where they have no parking.
I will concede the fact that, yes, even, it's probably, you know, as I indicated, the central business district is a central business district, but there probably is a little bit better location here than where they were asking for previously or the downtown in that. I mean, you can probably argue that. It gets tough, but, you know, I, it is more on the perimeter, if you want to say, of the central business district.
And on top of that, also, any building that they would want to operate in wouldn't have to be zoned for assembly?
No.
No? Not for, I mean, they're kind of assembling.
Well, from the, yeah, from the building side.
I mean, the Legion already is, but any other building or storefront, so that's not a concern.
Yeah, because the, because the issue obviously is a code says it's a church use or religious activities or a special use permit in the downtown. If they were in any other zoning district, they'd be fine. There wouldn't be an issue, whether it's commercial, whether it's residential, because our code says it's a permitted use in the residential. If you go to our commercial section, it says any use that's permitted in an R2 is also permitted in the commercial areas. So that's how you get to the point that it's basically allowed everywhere but the central business district. There was an ordinance, I think, in, it was back to 2015, somewhere in there, or maybe a little bit, or 20, 2007, I think it was. Anyway, they had specifically done an amendment to the zoning code to say churches are only allowed in the downtown through a special use permit. So that's why we're here.
Okay.
If there were any other part of town, it'd be a non-issue.
Well, I mean, that building there accommodates what they want to do.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Any building in the downtown area wouldn't, wouldn't accommodate.
Kind of need to, and, and, and I want to, I mean, I'm glad the church is, is doing what they're doing in Guthrie and, you know, this is a short period of time, you know, if we can accommodate them in some way, it would, it would be nice. But I think I need to clarify in my mind, is it, is it the nature of it being a nonprofit, non-commercial use? Because American Legion's there, you have, you could say the post office, there are other, there may be other entities that are not religious, so they don't require a special use permit, but they may be non-commercial oriented, that you could argue, would be okay and a benefit to a downtown area.
Man, I think it's no different than holding bingo there. I mean, if I want to look at it differently, I don't think it's any different than holding bingo there.
Right, it's a nonprofit.
Two nights' week, yeah.
And it just happens, American Legion is not a religious activity, or else they would have to have a special use permit, I would imagine.
No, right, yeah, yeah. Because like I said, the key point is a church religious activities, that's what kicks in the special use permit. Because in the downtown, in the central business district, as you said, you can have a nonprofit organization in the building, you can have, you know, office uses, obviously retail and different stuff like that. And so like you said, there's other uses that would not necessarily be direct sales tax generating uses that can still be allowed in the downtown.
The only issue that I have is just, I mean, it's not anti-church, but unfortunately, churches make restrictions, create a lot of restrictions on the surrounding businesses, and we prefer to have really those businesses that they're creating tax dollars rather than being nonprofit. I mean, I donate, everybody donates.
The waiver would resolve that issue, correct? Or did I misunderstand the waiver?
Yeah, no, it should. I mean, you know, again, I will say, you know, even in a temporary state, that somewhat takes care of an issue in that. It's just, again, it's hard to say when other temporarys come along.
I don't think any of us would want a permanent.
Yeah, right.
Church that might prohibit future business, but temporarily.
And don't you think that we could make an argument that this is unique?
Yeah, I think the uniqueness of it, I think, does not set, does not set the far-ranging precedent in my mind. The time, the location, the timeframe, the location, the current use of that building and, and all of that.
So it sounds like you guys are making a point for a decision. Motion to approve?
We're slowly working our way there, aren't we?
Doesn't bother me.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
I'm making a motion.
Well, hold on, real quick, just, so I, for the record, with the motion to approve, is this with the condition that the use expire September 30th of 2021? That it be temporary? Okay.
Yes.
And do we want them to get a waiver from the ABLE Commission?
Now, if it expires September, then they'd have to come back before us to ask for.
Yes, an extension or another permit, yeah.
Like a lease, I guess. You can't renew your lease, it'd be like a lease agreement, so you keep on coming back and renew your lease, so.
Yeah.
Your church will do.
Could we skip the waiver for now and if they extend, ask for an extension, then make them?
Oh, absolutely. It's not a requirement, I was just mentioning that.
Is there, there's not going to be any issues with?
I don't know that for sure.
Red brick knights or anything like that?
I will say, the distance alone won't be an issue with that.
Okay.
Would this expire on September the 30th or 20th or whatever?
Yes, yeah.
And they've made it clear they're willing to, to have a waiver themselves that would allow anyone else to have a.
Yep.
Yeah, they've said that, they've said that. So, yeah, like he said, we're not anti-church, so.
No, I don't want to go on the record.
And if this helps them.
As being anti-church.
If this helps them get into their new building and all that.
Because you had seconded it, right? Don, did you, who seconded it?
I made a motion, but I don't.
Oh, you sec, no.
Sure, I can second.
Okay, okay.
We appreciate the American Legion, we appreciate churches in Guthrie.
That's all right. I'll give it to Don and he'll have a second. There you go, yeah. With the condition that it expire on the 30th at 21, and that's it, correct? Okay. Don McBride?
Yes.
Aaron Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
No.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
Okay, four to one.
Okay, item nine, PC application number 21-011, discussion and possible action on a request for a special use permit for a home-based pet grooming service within the R1 single-family dwelling district for a property located at 914 Mimosa Drive. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is up in the, again, over, almost by the rezone, up in the northeast part of our community. It's off of Walnut and that subdivision area over there, off of Mimosa. The property's Zoned R1, they're requesting a home-based pet grooming service. And just to kind of fill in, our code does not have anything to do basically with pet grooming, because as old as it is. However, the planning director, myself, made the determination that a grooming service is a similar use to a barber shop slash salon in that, because we're still cutting hair type of service. The only difference is we have an animal versus a human. And so based on that, a home salon, barber shop is allowed through a special use permit. So hence the reason we're here going through a special use permit. Anytime that you have kind of a home-based business or have anything that could look like commercial activity within a neighborhood, it's important to make sure that that use is not going to have a negative impact to that residential area in that. And that's why home occupations, they usually have some restrictions where only a certain amount, you know, usually by appointment, you can only have so much traffic, so to speak, and hours and et cetera, et cetera. So staff kind of took that perspective with this, because we do have other barber shops that are based out of their home that have been approved previously. And to be honest with you, we don't have any issue with those. We haven't had much issue. And so, again, staff looked at it at a similar manner, that I don't think the use itself is going to have a negative impact to the area, it's not going to trigger substantial traffic. But just to make sure that there was no issue, staff did want to put conditions on it to make sure that, again, it would not get out of hand in that. So staff had recommended that the special use permit be approved with the condition that the pet grooming service be conducted solely by the resident occupants of the home and no other employees shall be permitted, that the, no more than one appointment per hour and appointments be limited to the hours between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m., no boarding or short-term stay of animals is allowed, and finally, only one sign may be allowed, a one-square-foot sign in area, which is typical of a home occupation. So with that, I give it back to the commission. The applicant is here, if you have any questions regarding what they want to do.
Okay. Any questions, comments for the applicant or amongst ourselves?
The question that I have is, I think we need, if in the case, we need to discuss is the number of the animals at one time at the property. I think it should be.
This is in the recommendation.
No, not the numbers. I mean, like, three animals really cannot be more than three dogs at one time in the house, or three. You have, you hear just one appointment, one hour, that means they could drop it all at eight o'clock in the morning and pick them up at 5:00.
No, that's the.
And there's nine of them in there.
Right, that was the condition of no boarding or short-term stay of animals is allowed.
You can't keep them there unless they're being.
Right, so they have to go get their haircut and take them away.
I mean, most of the time, you'll have them, drop your pet off at 8:00. Sometimes they're through by 10:00 or 10:30, so they leave, they call the patron, have them come over and pick up their animal. If you approve this, which I'm all for it, because sometimes that person don't get there to pick up.
Oh, no, yeah, and that's understood, and, and, and I don't think that's an issue. You're right, Mr. McBride, I mean, you know, they may drop them off and then come back later. I mean, it's no different than, you know, dropping your child off at the barber shop and they get a haircut and you come back in a half hour. Yeah, I, I just don't think that the extent to where you're going to have, you know, everybody drop off their animals at 8:00 and then they come back at 5:00, because that goes to the one appointment per hour. Now granted, some may have two or three animals that they want to drop off, which, again, I don't really think's a problem, because the biggest issue is the traffic generation for that, not necessarily the number of animals. I mean, a single-family residence, I think by code, you can have up to five pets, you know, just at the house, you know, in that. So I don't think that's a critical aspect. The aspect is, yeah, making sure that you don't have 10 people show up with their dogs at 8:00 a.m. And, and in talking with the applicant, that is not going to happen. They, in fact, are looking to have less than one appointment per hour at this point.
Is there anything you all like to add to that?
I.
If you could get a.
Yeah. I think that he's pretty much hit the nail on the head. So I worked at a shop for two years that we did have it like that. You have drop-off time between 8:00 and 9:00, and you have 40 dogs dropped off in that one-hour period, and then they stay till 5:30. My, one of my biggest reasons of wanting to do home grooming is one, to be with my kids, and also because I want to be able to take it slower and really like feel like I'm putting my art into it, one-on-one. That is my biggest goal. Of course, there are going to be some families that have three or four schnauzers running around and they need them all dropped off at the same time, so those I can understand. But no more than one family needs to be at my house ahead of time, so I'm good with everything that's been said.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I have a question, not for her necessarily.
Yes.
I mean, I saw here one square foot in area.
Mm-hmm.
Is this, you know, it seems like, and it's been several years ago since I went to Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and they have several homes that have businesses in them. And I don't know that this is even a route we want to go, but I, the thing that I remembered about the businesses there, it wasn't that the, the signs weren't in the yard, the signs were on the house, you know, and they were, I mean, it wasn't like you were advertising your business in the yard. The, the sign was there so that new people coming could see the sign, the small sign up on the house, and it, if not, you just end up having like a real estate-type sign in the yard all the time, sort of. So, I mean, I don't know that that's something that we would want to request, but it is something to consider.
Yeah, and when I put the one sign, as you know, I didn't put in the yard or what, it could very well be put by the garage or the house or.
I just didn't know that that's anything that anyone else.
Because like you said, it's, it's usually utilized, so when you're going down Mimosa and you're getting close and you're like, oh, there it is, you know, in that, more so than like you said, advertising for people just to stop by, yeah.
Yeah, I would love to know what your recommendations are with that, because, I mean, my front door.
What do you think about it?
I would love to be able to have a sign on my home that not only people can see and be like, oh, that's the one, but also, like, know that you're going to the west side of my house.
But it'd be a very tall sign.
I would like to have one that's seen from the street, but.
I'd be all big.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be.
So you're saying the sign on the house would direct them where to go, which garage door, which store, where the entrance is?
Right, I know, I, I'm fine with not having a huge sign in the middle of my yard, I'm fine with that, as long as I can have like a one-by-one sign.
Yeah, I was going to say, this sign was more for, to say, you know, Victoria's Pet Grooming. If she wants to put another sign that says, you know, entrance, or, you know, use the garage entrance, not the front door, that really doesn't count. That, that's something she could do.
You could do a two-by-two sign.
Yeah.
On the side of your house, or garage door, or whatever, something that's visible to your people that's pulling up to your house.
What is the standard city sign?
That's a home occupation standard, that's why I put that in there.
It's just one.
Yeah, one, one square foot.
But it doesn't stipulate where? It could be in the yard or on the house?
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, that's why.
Well, then we can let her decide.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, that's why it didn't say in there that it couldn't be on the house or it had to be in the yard. All it's saying is you get one sign.
And the size.
You can put it wherever you want.
Yeah.
Just don't put it in the street right away. So don't attach it to the mailbox.
My mailbox is by my front door.
Oh, okay, then you're okay, yeah. Yeah, mine's not in the street right away, so.
Motion to approve?
Drop the dog off.
Okay. Got a motion to approve with staff conditions?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And second was, perfect. Don McBride?
Yes.
Aaron Rooney?
Yes.
Joe Chapel?
Yes.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
And Chris Bryant?
Yes.
All right, five oh.
Wish you all the best.
Yeah, good luck.
Now I need your business card.
You know, I was waiting for y'all to send me before I spent a bunch of money on my business card.
All right, any
The Quimber grooming on Instagram and has all my information.
All right. Uh, staff comments?
Uh, the only thing I want to say is thank you, planning commission. Think it was a good meeting. Uh, I also appreciate all your guys' uh, you know, input and, and thought processes. I, I think we're going in good direction as a city. I think also this commission is doing a good part to help that direction, uh, in that, so I just want to say thanks.
You're the one doing all the work.
Yeah.
You make, you make it pretty easy.
Yes. We'll start with Aaron, if he has any comments.
Uh, no, just thank you all for making me feel so at home, uh, being able to ask my newbie questions. Yeah, and for the guidance, y'all, thank you. And to the public for showing up and caring.
I just want to thank Dan publicly for all the work he puts into this.
Yeah.
Because it is so thick. It's like, you can tell he's like a little OCD. That he really likes to get into this stuff and it's a
He used to drill a hole with only one piece of paper, man.
You learn a lot just reading his material, so I want to thank him for the time he puts into it.
Yeah, thanks to Dan, and I think Guthrie's progress in, in development is reflected in the length of our agendas.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Abe?
Well, it's Guthrie's changing for change. I mean, I can tell. Everybody knows Guthrie's changing and hopefully it's changing for good, which I think it is. But I think some of the stuff in here that we still need to be a little bit picky, rather than just kind of jumping the gun though. But I'm glad we all are here and appreciate all the good, uh, spring that the God has given us. It's enjoyable weather. Nice, nice to be here.
Thank you. Don?
I just want to thank Dan for the work on the P U D. I hate to see a subdivision that big come in and try to get on thirty-five foot lots and stuff. And, um, I've built them on minimum six thousand square foot in this town myself, but I never stayed with a six thousand square foot. Mine were eight, nine thousand square feet. I made the numbers work. And, you know, and somebody ought to be able to make the numbers. It's not always about the final dollar for what they put in their pocket. You know, it's a matter of can I make it work and can this town support four hundred and something small homes and throw all the traffic out on the small street?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
We're still open.
I'm Steve Gullenbeck and I have a home out on Lake Road. I'm also
You're the developer, right?
Uh, no.
No, okay, sorry.
But
Sorry.
That's my nephew.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. And, um, I'm glad everybody's gone, cuz I want to make a couple of comments. Uh, I'm the general manager of a company in Oklahoma City, and I've heard every reason, plan and excuse that you can give when somebody wants to make something happen. And I appreciate the fact that you all held them to the fifty foot. I feel like that it is not conducive, uh, they can use the excuse if they want to, that it is something that is the way people are thinking nowadays. The real thought pattern is right here. This is where, that, that's what it was all about. And, uh, I'm, I'm all good with them putting in a development. It's, it's good for Guthrie. It's good for Guthrie. But to pack us in like sardines and then have a fire come sweeping through there is not good for Guthrie. So I want to tell you all as a whole, thank you all very much for taking a stand on that. I, I wasn't here to, to make an issue or anything, but I want to tell you that I, I heard a lot of good comments from y'all and you dug into a little bit of stuff. And I like to hear that.
Well, Dan makes it pretty easy, you know.
Dan, Dan does a good job.
When I built Mission Hills down there, of course, I did mine with funds. And I can tell you how quick you can pay back a million and a half dollars, so I did three phases down there. The first phase, I dedicated to paying my debt service. I had over a million and a half paid off and still had thirty lots left on the subdivision. So I know how much money is inside a subdivision for money to come back, and it's not always cutting a lot size, uh, lumber size and stuff for people. I've lived on small lots where you can't even build you an outbuilding to store your stuff. All those people building those homes over there, I don't care if it's a man and his wife and a young one. They're not gonna have any place to store anything other than a ninety-dollar a month storage.
Or in their front yard.
Or in their front yard.
Well, that's what worries me.
That you got twenty-one feet minimum, pretty much, twenty.
I mean, Dan was exactly right.
And on a thirty-five foot lot, you just have a tiny little place to walk in your houses.
Well, I mean, I mean, there's the example
You're living in a garage with a door on the side is what it looks like.
And it takes away the character of the development of the addition.
I mean, you know, you have the example of like the Wheeler District in Oklahoma City, but they have more of a, they're gonna have more of a grid pattern and they do have alleyways.
Right, absolutely.
With single, mostly double, you know, car garages. So there is, and, but they only have one access point right now, one entrance and exit. They probably have two when it's all said and done. They have zero lot lines. I think their wa, lot widths are maybe twenty, thirty feet. But, but they have the alleyways and the garage.
And it also looks more like, you know, Guthrie did back
Right.
thirties and forties.
Like I said, the context, the context is everything.
And they have, they're gonna have a ton, and they're gonna have a huge park, swimming pool, or school and all that, so.
I mean, I could see somebody try to develop twenty acres, thirty acres on forty-foot lot lines if they want to, cuz your community might accommodate twenty, thirty homes, forty homes on, somebody retired, somebody that travels a lot. But not four hundred and something houses for a town that's just now starting to grow.
Well, if you figured an average, just of one and a half cars per home, if you average that, you're talking about six to seven hundred cars in and out of there daily.
Yep.
And with only two accesses on the same place, and it's my nephew's, sell the land, it's great, sell it. Let's, let's go with it. Make it, make a plan that works. We get another access line.
All right, well, uh, with that